Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our February 5, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Mason County Commissioners. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Trask, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item number three, if the clerk would please take roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Chutey.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Very good, thank you. Item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business, item 4.1. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Deborah Jamerson sent in an application for the Lewis-Mason-Thurston area on aging advisory board. Washington State Association of Counties sent in their 2018 annual report. The State of Washington Department of Health sent an administrative order reclassifying portions of Oakland Bay and Hammersley Inlet. Wave Division Holdings LLC sent in a rate adjustment notice. And the Washington Department of Natural Resources sent a county income report explanation of tables for 2019.
Okay, thank you. Item number 4.2, we have a news release, RFP for services related to the homeless housing funds. Steph, I'd ask Todd to come.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Morning.
Mason County Department of Community Services is pleased to announce the request for proposal application for the homeless housing grants is now open for the 2019 to 2021 grant term. The homeless housing grant program includes funds from the Consolidated Homeless Grant and local document recording fees associated with engrossed second substitute house bill 2163 administered by Mason County. Mason County Community Services is responsible for contracting and compliance activities related to these homeless housing funds. These funds provide resources to agencies that respond to the immediacy and urgency of homelessness and make sure that everyone has a safe and appropriate place to live. Homelessness is prevented whenever possible, or if it can't be prevented, it is a rare, brief, and one-time experience as part of the homeless crisis response system. Mason County Community Services Committee to supporting agencies that have a primary objective of ending homelessness in Mason County. The RFP application materials can be found on the Mason County website under Request for Proposals, or contact Todd Parker, (360) 427-9670, extension 293, or by email,
Thank you, Todd. Moving on to item number five, this is our open forum for citizen input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to come forward and address the commission on items that aren't on today's agenda. If you notice, on the agenda today, it's three minutes per person for a 15-minute total time of public comment. If you're interested in making a comment on something not on today's agenda, come forward, and the chair will recognize you.
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar Shelton. I learned in the briefing yesterday that there are plans in the works to build a new jail, whether in conjunction with Gray's Harbor or on our own. There have always been people who cannot live within the rules in society, but time and regulations have limited the options. Europe used to send people to the colonies, Australia and the New World. There used to be workhouses, poor houses, old soldiers' homes. People who couldn't fend for themselves had places to go. I spent a Saturday night in the emergency room of Sparrow Hospital in Detroit after I broke an ankle. It was the drunk tank because their hospital had assumed that responsibility. But we don't have a colony to send people to. We don't have a hospital. Our regional hospital has neither drunk tank nor mental health beds. And we have gotten to the point that the jail has become our one-stop shop for people who we don't know what else to do with. I don't know data specifically from Mason County, but jails notoriously across the U.S. are places that people with mental health problems end up because there's nowhere else to put them. And we've more and more seen this as the responsibility of the nonprofits. It's not the responsibility, we think, of the state to take care of this, or state in terms of government. A new jail will cost a lot of money, both to build and to run. I know Shelton, the last time I heard, was being charged over $100 a day for everyone in the jail. That's a lot of money. Think what you could do if you spent that much on people in other options. And so I would encourage you to think about spending that money in a preventive, a better way. We currently have absolutely no permanent supportive housing in Mason County. Housing for people who cannot, will likely never be able to fend for themselves, and so they're outside a system that would provide support they need to keep them from being folks that we think might be better thrown in jail. We have very few single-room housing units for adults who may be chronically homeless. These people create problems for our justice system, for our emergency system, when they're out on the roads, out in the streets, in the woods. And so I really urge you to look seriously at accepting some responsibility for a place for these people to be. For what used to be the state hospital, the old folks' home, the workhouse, the poor house, not good, but it was an indication that local state governments accepted some responsibility for providing someplace for these people to be. We can do better than simply more jail space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? Monty?
Monty Ritter, 538 Maple Street. I was here three weeks ago on January 15, and I was speaking out in favor of the public benefit rating system. After I spoke, a few comments were made that I thought I'd come back and kind of clarify. The first thing that I'd like to say is the gentleman mentioned that after I got done, explain, if I can just add to Marilyn Vogler's comment, this is kind of all ties in rather nicely. Because with the public benefit rating system, I explained how it could be used to support trails and how it could actually, the public benefit rating system has a method which would pay for these trails, which frees up money for the support services, which allows facilities to have money for jails and, you know, whatnot. Going back to this, as far as the person, one person claimed that he doubted that there would be support from the public for giving up small parcels of land for trails, the way that I suggested. I just thought, as I went back, I found that there was some drafts done by the public for the commission to look at before, and these kind of prove that there is a support from people out there who are private citizens who would do, would support the building of trails. I also have a draft here from Jefferson County which explains the benefit of their Olympic Discovery Trail and how much money and economic development was provided to the county in the monies, the safety, the benefits, all over the place, jobs that were created for support services of trails, et cetera. So what kind of gets me around to this other subject is I heard, I found out that you're doing an audit of the properties that, or you're doing the audit of the properties that are currently enrolled in the open space tax relief program, and I have one of these properties in that. And as I look through my data for my open space participation, well, actually, I'm not in compliance with what I'm supposed to be because I'm in timberland, which means that I need to have a timber, a forest land management program, which I don't have, and I was never asked to have completed one, but I see that what's going to happen, the way I see it is, if the assessor does an audit of all the properties involved, she's gonna, she has two numbers she has available, which is the current use value of the property and fair market value of the property, but the Open Space Tax Act does not say she needs to have what is referred to as fair, I mean, best and highest value. And I can understand why. This is a Yellow Book appraisal. They cost about $20,000. This is a Yellow Book appraisal for the Coulter Creek acquisition, and as I looked at it, you can see that the current use value is $9,000 something, something. The fair market value is $166,000, but the highest and best value, what Mason County actually paid, along with grant monies and whatnot, was $665,000. So if you do an assessment of the current properties, you're getting two numbers, but you're not going to pay $20,000 for 300 properties to get the highest and best value. Therefore, I'm not quite sure, unless the assessor sends out a request which shows that you're in compliance, which is the way that the Open Space Taxation Act is written, she has the authority to have everybody say, hey, this is what you have last signed. Are you still in compliance? People have to sign that and respond to it, and a lot of people are going to all of a sudden say, whoa, I better get mine reclassified. I'm allowed to do it, and I know that it's possible for me to go in and reclassify my property, and I'll do that right away. I'm still under the open space tax plan, but I'm going from forest land, as I'm allowed, to open spaceland, which is something, as I've shown before, I can show that I'm in compliance with that part of the Open Space Tax Act. However, other properties might not be so lucky, and so I'm afraid that once the commissioner has the auditor, who, the only real number she can get for your audit, the assessor is going to have to send out this request, and when people start realizing that they're going to have to come in and change classification, you're going to get overwhelmed with a whole bunch of people. So I'm not quite sure if what you're doing to push everything off to July, and I can understand why the assessor would like to get a grasp, and all of this makes sense, but I'm saying you're kind of opening up a can of worms here. And for some people, if they're not compliant and they sign this affidavit, then they are committing perjury, and if they do that, they have to repay all the monies that they've ever, the tax relief they've ever received, plus interest, plus a 20% penalty. And that means people are just basically going to be forced to give you guys their property if they lie on this form. I'm not sure exactly if everybody realized that. I think that's the way it works. I know that you have ways that you can get around it and stuff. I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Great. Thank you. Any others for public comment at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, adoption of today's agenda.
I move for adoption of today's agenda.
Seconded to adopt today's agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes. We have minutes from January 28, January 20, and January 22.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes. January 28, 2019 briefing minutes, January 22, 2019 regular meeting minutes, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the January 28, 2019 briefing minutes and the January 22, 2019 regular meeting minutes as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, this is our action agenda for today. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda, at which time there will be an opportunity for commissioners and the public to ask questions and have an opportunity to remove items for a separate discussion and vote. We will go ahead and read through them now. Commissioner Netherland, if you'd please read items 8.1 through 8.4. Commissioner Trask, 8.5 through 8.8, and then I will take 8.9 through 8.13.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, item number 8.1 reads, approval to have the board sign the updated interagency agreement and the 2019 memorandum of agreement, Appendix A, between Mason County and Washington State University Extension. Item number 8.2, approval of warrants and treasurer electronic remittance. Claims clearing fund, warrants number 8062093 through 8062277. The amount, $854,218.69. Direct deposit fund, warrants number 56114 through 56471. The amount, $693,059.80. Salary clearing fund, warrants number 7004183 through 7004210. The amount, $478,015.21. Item number 8.3, approval of the resolution to close the $25 change drawer for Mason County Utilities and Waste Management, and approval of the resolution to lower the change drawer in Mason County Assessor's Office from $200 to $50. Item number 8.4, approval of the resolution to cancel uncollectible personal property taxes.
Item 8.5, approval to adopt the housing fund management policies and procedures of the Public Health Division of Community Services. Item 8.6, approval to sign the acknowledgment of receipt refund report for 2018 from the Mason County Treasurer. Item 8.7, approval of Amendment 6 to Consolidated Contract CLH 18253 between Mason County Public Health and the State of Washington Department of Health. Item 8.8, approval to authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement between Mason County and the Squawson Indian Tribe, where the parties agree to work cooperatively to assist in the development of implementation of a watershed restoration and enhancement park for RIRA 14A that is consistent with Chapter 90.94 RCW.
Item 8.9, approval of a private line occupancy permit granting permission to run a septic transport line and power under and across Landon Road for parcel number 22210-50-00015. Item 8.10, approval to authorize Public Works to solicit proposals, select a consultant, and approval to allow the county engineer to sign the agreements for on-call cultural resource services. The maximum payout is not to exceed $50,000. Item 8.11, approval to authorize the chair to sign the grant questionnaire and approval to allow the Public Works Director to sign the Department of Commerce grant forms to execute the local and community project grant program grant in the amount of $499,550 for the Belfair Sewer Extension to the Puget Sound Industrial Center. Item 8.12, approval to authorize Public Works to solicit proposals, select a consultant, and approval to allow the county engineer to sign the agreement for cultural resource services for Bear Creek-Dwato Road, excuse me, Clear Zone Project, CRP 2006. The maximum payout is not to exceed $25,000. And item 8.13, approval to authorize the chair to execute the road levy certification for 2019. Having read through all the items on today's action agenda, are there any items that Commissioners or the public have questions on or would like to have removed for a separate discussion and vote?
8.11.
Do you have a question, or would you like it removed?
Um, not quite. A couple points and questions, but I'm more of those points.
Okay, so let's, we'll go ahead and remove it, and then we'll have some public comment then. Any other Commissioners, members of the public? Okay, so we will remove item 8.11, and I would entertain a motion.
Before we do, would you rather do the motion first, or do you think it would be appropriate, because there will be thank yous involved, to allow for our attorney to speak now or afterwards?
Either way, Tim, are you okay if we do it now?
Sure.
Okay. Before we move forward with a motion on the action agenda, we wanted to call out in particular item 8.8, the approval to authorize signing a memorandum of agreement between the Squawson Indian Tribe and Mason County, and we wanted to give Tim Whitehead a chance to make a couple of remarks.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm very excited for this day. The memorandum of agreement between Mason County and the Squawson Indian Tribe has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of heavy lifting, and there are certain people that I want to thank that worked very hard through the process. Two of them are sitting right in front of me, Erica Barben and Sharon Haynesley, with the tribe. They've been fantastic folks to work with. They've been great. Learned a lot from them. They've done a lot. We've had countless meetings, so thank you very much. I want to thank Joe Mentor, who is not here. He got us going and got us on the right foot. He was a great resource. And a lot of county folks. I want to thank Dave Wyndham for thinking outside the box and always getting the yes. I appreciate you very much. Kel, the same. You did a lot of hard work on this. Tim Higgs, who works for me, is a fantastic attorney and a big help, and a big thanks to the county Commissioners. I know you've been lockstep with us every step of the way, so thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no objection if Sharon, maybe if you have any comments.
Sure.
If not, that's fine, too.
And thank you to Tim Whitehead, who is, as always, a pleasure to work with. Again, thank you to all the staff. Yes, it has been some heavy lifting, but it's just been a pleasure. I think that we've got kind of a joint view of where this would go, and hopefully we'll be able to continue that into the future. It's really unbelievably important to the tribe to be on this foot with the county. So thank you again, all.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, except for the removal of 8.11 at a citizen's request.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's action agenda, with the exception of item 8.11, which will be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Any additional discussion?
Just all the same thank yous, as was just presented. That's why it was nice to have our attorney speak first on this one. Saved me a lot of work.
Commissioner?
I agree. This is, I'm excited to work with Squawson.
And I would just echo all those comments. I think this is, you know, perhaps a new day for our relationship with the Squawson, and look forward to continuing the work both between our two parties and as part of the RIRA 14 watershed group that we're working with, the Collegian and other local partners, and look forward to this being a very fruitful relationship going forward. So thank you for all of your work, and please pass our thanks on to your tribal council as well. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. We'll move on to item 8.11, approval to authorize the chair to sign the grant questionnaire and approval to allow the Public Works Director to sign the Department of Commerce grant forms to execute the local and community projects program grant in the amount of $499,550 for the Belfair Sewer Extension to the Puget Sound Industrial Center. And just before we get into it, I would ask maybe Bart to come up and make a, do a quick briefing on this, and then we'll move into public comment.
Commissioners, public, so this item would allow us to, we had a legislative request last year, an amount of actually $515,000. The number that's before you now is, there's a little administrative amount that the Commerce Department takes away, so we actually only get $499,000. It'll be used to hire a consultant to do a general sewer plan amendment for the Belfair Sewer System, as well as go, once that's kind of complete, go forward with the design of extending the collection system towards the Puget Sound Industrial Center. And yeah, just kind of for the design phase at this point.
Any questions from the Commission, your staff? Okay, hearing none. Any questions from the public for staff before we go into public comment?
Point first, maybe question, well, I can ask one question.
Okay.
If this goes through, it's good carried out, and this actually, project happens, the customers, you know, the clients that the court has right now that's on their individual little sewer system there at the court, do they all come over, or is it additional, someone just additional clients that come on board as new ones develop at the court?
At this point, that's an unknown. So as part of this planning process is working with the city and port to kind of determine exactly where this sewer line is going. Certainly connecting with where that lagoon system is now is one possibility. Another possibility may be just, hey, we're just looking at the new development that's coming in the future that's not connected to that. They have a lot of undeveloped properties, you know, around the airport that are not connected up. So at this point, yeah, it's just kind of unknown how that will hook up.
Okay. Thank you, Bart. And at this point, I'll open it up for public comment. If you have a comment, please come forth.
Jeff Carey. Yeah, not for or against the project. If it financially makes sense, it should be done. My concern is, is that a lot of these projects, they all start out small, and as the public, when you try to look at what's going on with the grants, it's hard to tell where things are going and what's, you know, what's going to happen. Because, like, for example, points that concern me a little bit is that in the city of Bremerton's comp plan, both for their cap of facilities portion and their sewer, and I think also the Puget Sound Industrial Park's cap of facilities plan, there's no real, there's no reference really to Mason County providing anything. I mean, just, it's omitted. I mean, they have outline of the plan, they show circulation areas, you know, gravity feet areas and things like this, but they do not show, or even, you know, really hint at the issue that there might be cooperation between that and Mason County. So those are always concerned is, you know, it's not, it's not, so people can't see what's happening. I don't know until it's, you know, well underway. The other thing is that catches my attention, only from the standpoint of planning, is that with the ports system there, it's, the update's been in there since 1987, and at least by port documents, it's showing that it's only at 33% utilization. And, you know, it's been there 32 years, and it's only up to 33%. I realize you can't, you know, build those, you can't fill them to max. That's not the way you work with sewers, but we're just, all I am concerned is that somehow, right now, there's no problem. You have the grants, you know, I see where that's going. It's just, I remember how Belfair kind of got started, and it seemed like we had almost everything paid for, and before it was all done, you know, we have, you know, a big piece of debt. And I know with, you know, North Bay case inlet, different situation, but again, the users, the ratepayers ended up with a much higher bill than we ever anticipated. That could have been maybe foreseen if it, you know, was worked with the comp plan, worked with the cap facilities plan, a little more public information, instead of just, you know, the sides saying, no, I want it, or no, or yes, I do want it. So I guess the short and sweet is, without laboring, you know, belaboring the departments, at least get some pieces, at least big pieces of the pie out there so that people can see what's, you know, what the general plan is. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment and move to Commissioner deliberation and potential motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval, authorize the chair to sign the grant questionnaire and approval to allow the Public Works Director to sign the Department of Commerce grant forms to execute the local and community projects program grant in the amount of $499,550 for the Belfair Sewer Extension to the Puget Sound Industrial Center.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, approval to authorize the chair to sign the grant questionnaire and approval to allow the Public Works Director to sign the Department of Commerce grant forms to execute the local and community projects program grant in the amount of $499,550 for the Belfair Sewer Extension to the Puget Sound Industrial Center. Any additional discussion?
Yes. For those that don't know, Jeff is completely intimate with all the numbers in regards to the North Bay and the Belfair Sewer System. He's one of the citizens that actually worked on the committee, were putting together the plan for funding it and getting out of the debts that we're in. Jeff, I'd like to let you know that a couple of things on that, that plant that they have over there already in Kitsap, it's now around the 50% mark, but the problem is, it's actually a septic, a big giant septic design, not like ours, and if they were to get some type of heavy industrial, they couldn't handle that kind of waste, and that's what they're hoping to be able to connect with us in the future, if it all goes through. What this is, is just to work out for the design, and I agree, I'm watching the whole time trying to make sure we don't go into any debt, and the truth is, we're trying to team it up with the idea that we're going to have the Belfair bypass, putting all the piping in at the same time, and working with how we would hook up and what type of agreements we would have afterwards, but that's only going to happen with the help of some political friends that are working hard, such as Drew McEwen, who has put this into the capital budget, and he's on budget, so we have a great chance to do it, with the idea that we're just setting up, setting up the base for it, not that we would take on any more debt, because everybody knows that we can't, and you are correct to worry about that. But this is just to try and But this is just to try and get it out there. If we at least get it up to our county line at the bare minimum, that means we can have new customers in the industrial area on our own side and not take on more debt, but instead bring in money. I don't know if that alleviates any of your worries. But thank you for all the work you've done in the...over the years in regards to those.
Commissioner?
I just...I would also, just in addition to what Commissioner Netherland said, which is all accurate, also add that, you know, from the planning perspective, this wasn't an opportunity until a couple of years ago. And so, depending on the age of those documents, you know, I think it was...I think there was a... when the city of Bremerton started to look at what it would cost for them to service this area, you know, and then the...is it West Sound? Is it the...from Port...yeah. So, then the other sewer purveyor over there, when you looked at the cost that it would take to have either one of those service this area and in that whole area, you know, between where we are and the city is, it was astronomical. And so, they saw this as a cost-effective partnership for the city of Bremerton, the port. And of course, you know our struggles up there as well. So, it was born out of finding efficiencies on both sides of the county line. And so, I think that's the...that's one of the main drivers. And so, Commissioner Netherland has been working with, you know, his contacts up in the, you know, the port. And I'm confident we can hammer out those details about, you know, what they do as they transition out of their large onsite septic, which we all know the Department of Health and Ecology, they want to...they're probably not real thrilled with having that out there. And of course, the type of waste that they're able to process there is problematic from an industrial perspective. So, I think this was born out of going back to the drawing board and seeing what options were available and the opportunity for us to get state funding to do this in a way that we haven't in the past. You know, and of course, if you're going to dig a big hole in the middle of the forest to build a bypass, if you're going to dig a big hole, you might as well put some pipe in there, too, at the same time. So, you know, really, it's about the timing. It's about the cost effectiveness and efficiency that this kind of a project would bring. And so, you know, we're going to do our best to see it through and appreciate all the support that we have in the legislature to help on this as well. So...
Just a note that I did look at the city's amendments. And, you know, they had some pieces in the capital facilities, but still did not address it even in their later amendments from the original date of the plan.
Sure.
For whatever that's worth is...
Great. Appreciate it. Any other commissioners?
To piggyback off of what he's saying, as we all know, they have to have...they've already agreed to expend a million dollars. And they have to have it in their comprehensive plan, just like we do. So, I'll make some contacts that do that. And as for the port, they have not included it in their comprehensive scheme, which is their version of our comprehensive plan. But you're right, they haven't, so they can't invest money yet without that.
Scheme seems like an unfortunate...
I know. That's what they call it for the ports.
Very good. If there is no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Very good. Moving on to item number nine, other business. Are there any department heads or electeds that would like to address the commission? I think you're it.
It could be a good thing. It could be a bad thing. In my business, I'm going to let you choose. First, the important thing, I guess, to start off on the light side, and make sure you get this in the paper. We have our polar bear funds on Saturday. And I kind of left the option open to the commission to jump with us. And we know where the strength of the commission is. Commissioner Trask quickly volunteered her husband. He will be jumping with us. So, we know who has the direction in that household. So, we look forward to seeing Commissioner Trask's husband jump in the freezing cold waters at Puget Sound on the Hood Canal on Saturday to raise money. I tried to start off a little bit light with that. I want to bring some things to your attention this morning. And I want to thank Commissioner Shutey and I had a chance to discuss this, as well as Prosecutor Dorsey and I a little bit yesterday. I need to draw a couple analogies for you of things that...so you understand where I'm going with this. It's a controversial issue. And I'm sure that if I would have announced today I was going to be here, the room would have been full out of the parking lot with the people on both sides of the issue, once again, trying to give me direction on how to do my job. I had a...I guess the only analogy I have for you is that oftentimes, if you've ever worked on a car, people that designed that car aren't the same people that work on it. You get the car and all of a sudden, it doesn't work out that way because they built it back in Detroit somewhere and you go to change the oil filter and you can't get to that oil filter because somebody else designed it and dictated how you were going to do something that you can now, you can't do. Or it's going to be real easy and it's not. Keep following me for a minute on this. I have inside my notebook that I've carried with me for 12 years now, a little statement by a person that was a student of mine. And I tell you this because the sheriff has to reach a wide range of people, not just in their political parties. A whole wide range of people, down to little people, all the way to the oldest people in our community. And this kid wrote to me, and it's been over 30 years ago, a child that I had in my classroom. She said, "In Shelton, you know him as the sheriff." Sorry to have glasses on. "I know him as Mr. Salisbury. I know him as my favorite teacher many years ago and as my protector and as my friend." Down further, I won't read the whole thing, but down further, it says, "I still think about you and I tell my kids about you and I love seeing you because you still protect others." You can draw from that at that point in time when that kid was at. I was working as a deputy sheriff here at the time and also as an elementary school teacher. And I had to make a decision at that time that a lot of people didn't appreciate and I took a lot of heat over. But that person was kept safe and 30 years later remembered that. Today, I'm here to talk to you about initiative 1639 and the steps are going to be taken to move forward on that. For those of you who don't know, it's that 1639 is the one involving the gun bill and everything that's been over in the legislature. I relate to you that we used to teach the kids in classrooms that there's four reasons for rules and laws. Please pay attention to these because the fourth one is the most important of the three, which becomes the first. The first reason for rules and laws is to protect people. The second reason for rules and laws is to protect property. The third reason for rules and laws is to maintain order. And the fourth part, the fourth reason for rules and laws becomes the first, is in that process of those three, is respecting everyone's rights. So, I have conversed with our prosecutor and others. I've received numerous articles on how the sheriff will deal with this. I have had people come in the office and tell me that I'm going to make a proclamation, tell me that I'm going to make a declaration, tell me that I will direct people to, and tell me that I will make a sanctuary city and all these other things that... And at the same time, I have people from the other side coming in and directing me on other things, on how we're going to do our job in the sheriff's office. Each sheriff in the state, and I looked it up, I actually brought it with me, takes an oath, abide by the Constitution of the United States. And I was one of the first sheriffs, I think the first sheriff in the state of Washington, when an issue came out about somebody saying that we're not going to enforce an issue 639. My comment was, "I see constitutional issues with it." They'd say what they were. I just, I think there's some constitutional issues that we have to be mindful of. Since then, a number of sheriffs, and last night on King Five, my kids called me, "Dad, did you see what Rick said last night, Sheriff Rick Scott?" I said, "Yeah, I saw it. Rick said..." I've sat down with all the sheriffs in the state and each one of them that have already commented have called me on this. I guess it's one of the nice things about, there's only one guy in the state that's been sheriff longer than I have. And there's about five of us that have been at the same time. And I considered one of the senior sheriffs in the state of Washington. We have to make some decisions on this initiative 639, how it's going to be carried out. Not everybody's going to be happy. But I do have to follow the right to protect everybody's rights, not just some people's rights. And when political parties contact me and tell me that I will do it their way and the next political party comes in, "No, you won't. You'll do it our way." I reserve the right as the elected sheriff to make my own decisions and I will do that. The last piece before I read the final part on this closure to this is that we have a good prosecutor's office. People are coming to sheriffs asking us to make decisions on things that somebody else designed and initiated, sent it through. And all, I would say, the super majority of sheriffs in the state of Washington said, "This is a bad, bad deal here." And it went on through. And now, the burden has come back to you and saying, "Well, the sheriffs, how are you going to fix this?" It really becomes, in the end, it doesn't really matter as much as what the sheriff does, is that if we derive charges and bring these things forward, is we end up sending those to our prosecutor's office. Really, in the end, that's who makes the final decisions on what we do. And if we don't do our job and send to the prosecutor a bunch of baloney all the time, after a while, they're not going to take us seriously. And so, we have to make sure that we respect the prosecutor's office and their decisions. So, I'm going to read you something I sent out to my staff yesterday. It will very much mirror what the other sheriffs in the states have done. Some people don't like it. I believe that 38 of us have agreed. And it'll sound very familiar to you, to the other sheriffs. This is a memo to the sheriff's office staff from me involving initiative 1639 and my conversations with the other sheriffs in the state of Washington and other law enforcement, our prosecutor, and also our commissioner yesterday. And I thank you for that time, Commissioner. "As sheriff of Mason County, I feel it's my duty and obligation to address the concerns brought to me by the citizens of our county regarding initiative 1639. I have discussed these concerns with sheriffs from across the state of Washington, as well as members of the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. As law enforcement leaders, we are sworn to uphold the Constitution, both federal and state, and to uphold the rule of law. The concerns about initiative are related to the Constitution and the courts will have the opportunity to rule on those concerns as they are raised. The rule of law is about respecting voters, the courts, and the law itself. We will uphold the rule of law and respect the role of the courts in interpreting the law. Therefore, until the legality of I-1639 is resolved, I instruct my deputies to take no enforcement action as it pertains to 1639. If you come across such matters in your duties as a Mason County Sheriff's Deputy, you will document the circumstances and when appropriate, you will refer the matter to the Mason County Prosecutor's Office for review." This isn't a matter of, I said earlier when somebody spoke up, said, "I won't do something." There's a difference between a won't and a can't. The challenges are, you're asking people to do things that are against the Constitution in this. There are some constitutional issues. It's not that I don't want to do this. I'm not going to do this. There's some constitutional issues that really, we can't do that because it's not lawful. So, at this point, I'm sure that, like Rick, it'll end up on King Five that another sheriff is revolting out or something. But all's we're saying is that we have to follow the Constitution of the United States. And until that is resolved, at this point, our people will take the information. We'll consult with our prosecutor's office and we'll take each case by case to move forward. But I'm not going to be directed and guided by any political party on either side telling me what to do or other people telling us what to do. We are going to look at each one of these objectively and case by case. And we'll have our prosecutor's office do the reviews with us so that we are staying within the bounds of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other department heads or electeds? Okay, moving on to item number 10, moving on to our public hearings. Item 10.1, we have a public hearing to consider a resolution establishing an honorary road sign program to allow the county and the community the opportunity to honor individuals or organizations that have made significant contributions to the county and ask Loretta to please brief us on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A while back, commissioners, you asked Public Works to consider renaming a road in honor of an ex-employee who had made very significant contributions to the county. And we were thinking, okay, great idea. But renaming a road can lead to problems with addressing and updating, where to find the new road name, all of these good things. So, we looked at some other examples and came up with the idea of the honorary road sign. So, you keep the original name, but you also have the honorary name that's in a brown and a white lettering. And so, you can, again, honor the individual or the organization that made great contributions to the county. So, we did some research and I want to thank Dave Smith and Kelly Medcalf in our office and of course, Chief Deputy Whitehead. In looking at other examples, taking crafting language for code revision and updates and then drafting this resolution that you see before you. And so, the purpose, again, is to allow for honoring significant contributions made by individuals or community members by placing this honorary sign. So, we're asking you today to consider approving this resolution, establishing the program. And then, we've got code revisions that will go in place and we'll get on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Questions from the public? Okay. Thank you, Loretta. We'll then move on to public comment. If there's any comment on this item, please come forward. Chair will recognize you. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public comment and move to commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution establishing an honorary road sign program to allow the county and the community an opportunity to honor individuals and organizations that have made significant contributions to the county.
Second that.
Moved and seconded for the board to approve a resolution establishing an honorary road sign program to allow the county and the community the opportunity to honor individuals or organizations that have made significant contributions to the county. Any additional discussion?
Well, lady that started for, how many years did she put in?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years here at the county. Imagine what she had to have endured, 37 years.
Quite a sentence.
Yeah. So, with that being said, I can't think anybody deserves it more.
Any additional comment? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Moving on to item 10.2, public hearing to consider the rezone of parcel 31929-32-00020, Kennedy Creek Quarry from Rural Residential 5, RR5, to Rural Natural Resource, RNR. Ask Kel Rowan to come and brief. Thanks, Loretta.
Good morning. Kel Rowan with Mason County Planning Staff. This is a rezone request from the Kennedy Creek Quarry. Kennedy Creek is located off of Highway 101 South in the South County. They came to us with a form from the Department of Natural Resources requesting us to sign what's called an SM6 form. And the county's unable to do that when the zoning doesn't match. And we noticed their extension of the mine, of just a five-acre extension of their 136-acre mine area, was in a rural residential five zone. And so, they've requested to rezone that to Rural Natural Resource to be able to continue mining. There are no other issues as far as critical areas. We did have a comment from the Squaxton Island Tribe. They discussed the issue with me when they received the SEPA determination. And in the end, they determined that they have no issues with the rezone going forward. The area is not going to be mined, the five-acre expansion, but it will be used for the scale house.
Entrance and exit, scale house.
Yeah, entrance and exit and the scale house. So, the applicant is here if you have any additional questions. But staff and the Planning Advisory Commission do recommend that the rezone get approved.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Okay, hearing none. Any questions from the public? Okay, hearing none, we will move into public comment. And if you'd like to make public comment on this item, please come forward and chair will recognize you.
Excuse me. New glasses don't work. Hi, my name's Steve Taylor. I work with Beclucus and Associates and we're consultants for Kennedy Creek Quarry. And we've been working on that project for like 20 years. And what this does is that five acres is not going to be mined, but it provides a real safe entrance and exit for the trucks. And, you know, that quarry produces and sells about 250,000 tons a year. So, that activity is really quite heavy in that area. So, prior to that, it was moved back into the quarry area where the stockpiles and really quite unsafe place. So, of course, miners move into an area and they don't check zoning or anything and they've operated there for like three years. But anyway, we're finally getting that all up to speed here. I'd like to thank the planning department and Kail for all their help. And any questions, we'll try to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
That parcel's already cleared and stuff anyway. Looking at it, it's not...
Correct.
It's just not...doesn't have the building on it yet, I guess. That's it. Good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on item 10.2? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public comment period and move into commissioner deliberation or motion. or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone of parcel 31929-32-00020, Kennedy Creek Quarry, from Rural Residential 5, RR5, to Rural Natural Resource, RNR.
I will second that motion.
Moved and seconded to rezone parcel 31929-32-00020, Kennedy Creek Quarry, from Rural Residential 5, RR5, to Rural Natural Resource, RNR. Any additional discussion? Hearing-
I just said, well, I wanted to say, I use your quarry quite often for gravel, for our gravel road, and I was very excited to see the improvement, so.
Thank you.
Great. Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to item 10.3, a public hearing to consider the annual update of the county's capital facilities plan. Again, ask Kel to please brief.
Thanks, Kel. Appreciate it.
Is he saying Kell?
Yeah.
Kel Rowan, Mason County Planning. So, this is an update to our capital facilities plan. The county went through our major eight-year comp plan update and that, for all of the required elements, and that was adopted in December of 2017. And typically, our capital facilities element is updated annually along with our budget, during our budget process, and I personally failed to coordinate that on time, and so, this is a little bit of a late update. I had the Finance Department and Public Works Department, both Bart and Loretta, do updates to this capital facilities plan. And in the updates, we all recognize, including some of our citizen staff, that there are some other updates that we would like to do, and I'm proposing today that during the Board and the PACS joint meeting on February 25th, our joint meeting to look at the 2019 work plan, that we look at the capital facilities element as one of our elements to do a make, not a major overhaul, but more of a major review and update to be prepared for the December 2019 update with the budget process. So, with that being said, this update, just if you look through and you see your line in and line outs, the edits are exclusive to the numbers from, going from 2019 to 2024.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the Commission?
The Sheriff's Department one has not been updated.
Correct.
Well, okay. Because it still says things that, you know, the 144 beds, it says all that, so we will get to that.
Yeah, we will, yes. So, my proposal for this work year is to go over, not just with the Finance and Public Works Departments, but all departments, and make sure that when each of the line items, each of the elements, that they then line up with the full capital facility, and you look in the front with the categories, the improvement costs, and the expenditures, and has the full total. I think if we go through our numbers, I'm not sure that those are matching right now. So, I want to be able to go through the entire thing and update it, including some language and not just the numbers.
Just a question then, so just a hypothetical. If we were to not do this and instead go through that process this year, what is the penalty, if any, to the county if, you know, if we don't adopt this and rather go through that process, as you said, and adopt later this year? What more accurate information?
Um, I don't know if, you know, typically, in the penalties, if we've been seen as out of compliance under the Department of Commerce, or, you know, out of growth management compliance, we could have grants withheld. I don't know if we're in that jeopardy. And the updates by the departments, by the Finance and the Public Works Departments, those are better numbers than what we have in the 2018 to 2023 plans, or 2024. So, this is a better update than not updating it today, but there is some work to be done throughout this year.
So, did we not do the process? I was on, we're all on the planning commission, both of us.
Right.
We did it every single year. We didn't do anything this year to give them the opportunities to bring it in?
We did, we did go through planning commission, but typically, we update the capital facilities plan annually, and we bring it along with the budget process. So, you'd be updating the annual budget, and we'd be updating our capital facilities plan. And so, we went through the budget, the county went through the budgeting process at the end of 2018, and I failed to bring the capital facilities element forward and have that updated along with the budgeting process. And so, this is, you know, because we are required to annually update the capital facilities element, we've gone ahead and done that.
Okay. Any question? Question or any other question? Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead. Are any questions from the public before we move into comment? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move into public comment. If there's anybody that would like to make a comment on item 10.3, come forward, and Chair will-
Jeff Carey. First of all, it's a pleasure, even when the county makes a mistake, to have the county admit that we didn't do something. It's so much easier to work with people. There's no head case, no resistance. We just get on with, you know, getting the job done. So, I appreciate that. And I'm not here to criticize on that issue, you know, as far as being right or wrong. I just want to point out that, you know, I've made comments over the years that this capital facilities portion, since even when Rob Drexler was on the PAC, to get it adjusted, and just nobody seems to be able to get their head around it, for whatever reason. Either just numbers, you know. My read has always been trying to get the numbers to correlate and sync up and what have you, and that's been always my issue. So, a few points I wanted to make was, one is that, one reason these exist is that citizens just need the big picture of what's happening. Also, when you're planning, you need to know what the big picture is. So, if you take one like the one with North Bay case, they proposed increases, they're looking at, or I say increase, project, I should say, which is, I think, the treatment expansion back in, yeah, the treatment upgrade, treatment plant upgrades. It's fine to state what they stated, but we don't, for some of us that at least have a question or two about it, is we don't understand where we've come from. For example, in the case of that one, it had the capacity, the system had the capacity in the beginning to go 1,500 EREs. I don't have a problem whether that's changed now or not, no issues, no issues on that. It's just that you need to, the way I've always looked at problems, especially when you start putting numbers to it and say you want money for this or this, this or that, is you say, okay, this is what we designed for, this is where we are, this is what's happening, this is the adjustments we've made, this is what we're going to need or foresee somewhere out in the future. Those need to be in the capital facilities plan, in my opinion. And at least looking at some of the, you know, rules for the comp plans, that seems like decent. And again, I don't want to criticize the county because I, this is not the worst capital facilities plan I've seen. I've seen a lot worse, a lot worse, from other counties. You just, you have no idea what the county's doing. You just kind of a number, and it's there. So, but there's so much more we could do with not a lot of effort so that we at least have points to discuss, and so that we're not arguing about things that we don't even know what we're arguing about because we don't know where we're coming from and going to, so to speak. So, I know, so I guess one issue is, you know, getting a few more facts into our sections dealing with whatever projects we're looking at. Kel is correct, you know, we've talked about it a little bit, but the summary of your totals does not match what you have in the details. And worse, in my opinion, worse than that is, as an average person, you can't correlate totally with these projects with your capital facility, in other words, your summary with your detailed, you know, projects. It just, you can't get there. I mean, I can't see, like, for example, in your stormwater, you have a, you know, a 21 million, almost $22 million number, but I can't find it anywhere in the plan. Parks and Recreation syncs up better, but it's still half a million different, and I don't think the public, and I realize you kind of, you can't advertise one way or the other, but I don't think the public understands that we're looking at using, at least the way the comp plan, the capital facilities portion of the comp plan is laid out right now, that we're going to spend in the next five years, at least proposed, 12 million or so, 12 and a half million of county, what they call county and house funds, towards those projects in the Parks and Recreation side of it. I don't, I'm not here to say whether we should or shouldn't. I have my opinions, but for now, I'm just saying that those need to be correlated and figured out so that people can see what's coming down. Okay, you've got parks, you've got this, we've got stormwater, we've got this, we've got, you know, wastewater, this, or, you know, there are improvements. Because it's just, it's too hard to, you just can't see. So, I guess, bottom line, sync up the amounts to, let's see here, try to keep it to a summary. Going into different sections, so like the parks, my opinion, based upon what we had on like on page seven of 85 of the plan, the capital facilities plan, if the national standard is like, you know, five acres per thousand, we're planning such a certain amount of growth over the next 20 years, fine, I don't have a problem, do it 40 years. You know, use OFM calculations and go 40 years. We still got way, by their standards, we got way more parks lands, you know, for parks than national standards. And I don't have a problem if we decide to change the national, what our standard's going to be, but I'm concerned that, you know, when we're looking at $12 million, you know, county funds towards parks, and we're looking at, you know, almost 1,000 acres right now, which is right now, three times the national standard average, you know, is that really where we want to go? Personally, no, I don't think it is, but that's, you know, for you guys to determine. With respect to the treatment plant, one quick, two points is, you know, you have things, this is another part of the plan that has, needs some fleshing out of things. It's like when you put rates, and so, over the next four years, yeah, over the next four years, you show under rates, a total of $750,000 being spent, there's, you know, there either needs to be a communication that's going to be amortized over 20 years, or that's going to all come into rates fairly soon, because that impacts, you know, that 104, $105 a month payment. But nobody can see that, and I get it, it takes time to put that together, but I think the more informed your public is, the better, longer term the county will be. That's my issue. Then there's like this loan and grant revenue, and I realize that's to the expansion of the plant. Again, I'm concerned that, you know, are we really where we think we should be as far as expansion and all those kind of things? Because, for example, I've always heard that one big problem North Bay has is when it rains, our numbers go way up. Well, I know at least one sewer manhole that, in lower part of the Playa Island, that it just keeps running summer long. I mean, it's not a river, but it's amazing what, you know, you know, just five gallons a minute kind of thing. It doesn't look very big, it looks very innocent, just a, you know, the bottom part of an eight-inch pipe, you know, like maybe that high. But you do that, you know, 24/7, and, you know, three days a month, that adds up to a lot of water that, you know, that just shouldn't have been in the system, that it's going to need treatment, that's going to cause us to spend million, a few million to expand when maybe, you know, 50,000, find the problem, fix the problem, and we buy ourselves some more time. So, anyway, I won't go into any more detail on that project. Like on page 21 of 85, I can't tell in the plan where it's being laid out, if that's related to the expansion of the Belfair Sewer going north on the old Belfair Highway, or that's related to the work, doing it, possibly connecting between the, to, you know, Peters Sound Industrial Park. You know, just can't tell. I mean, I can guess, but it's just, it's not clear. On 23, page 23 of 85, there's a breakout of, and this is kind of like under maintenance and paying down the debt. I'm not sure that needs, believe me, I'm concerned about the debt, okay? Don't get me wrong. But I'm not sure that's really part of your capital facilities plan anymore going forward. I mean, it's an expense. You've got this, going however many years into the future to pay, and you have to work that in, but I don't think that's like a project, if you will. And I don't, if the county comes back and says, "We're going to find those kind of things as a project," that's fine. I'm just saying, currently, it doesn't look like to me it should be a project. And two more to go. On page 25 of 85, it's pretty much crossed out. What happened, this is dealing with, this is dealing with the first phase, or no, this is dealing with, I think, the connection to PSIC, up the highway and all that. And I realize we're not going to get an answer right now on that, but, you know, it's like, okay, so where does that, as a project, disappear? Or is it not going to be a project? Because to me, it seems like it still should be a project somewhere, somewhere in the scheme of things, even if most of it's paid with grants, or even, you know, so whatever. And then, last but not least, take a different tack, get out of the sewer and the water and things like this. Page 64 of 85. I have a pet beef with this chart here. It's been this way for, I think, a quarter century, give or take, in the sense that the assessor, the auditor, have always wanted this space, and I'm not picking on them, there's other departments that have this issue, but they've always wanted this space, and somehow, for a quarter century, have been able to get by with the space they have, give or take a few hundred feet, one way or the other. Maybe we should look at that. Maybe it's really not needed, or is it something we're just, you know, totally posing over, you know, the assessor office on something that should have happened a while back. I realize it takes money, but if it's really not going, if we're just putting it up there and we really don't need it, let's not do that. I mean, that's not really planning capital facilities. If we think, you know, like in the 20-year horizon, that, okay, we're going to need 500 more feet, okay, that's one thing, but to say you're short almost 2,000 feet, and we've never done really anything about it in, at least since I can remember, '97, somewhere in that timeframe, '96 even, maybe we should readdress that. So, with that, I think that's just a start. The bottom line is, it can be a lot better. I don't want a nitty-gritty nitpick, but at the same time, if it's 5% or 10% or more, or 10% or more type things were costing the county, I think we should get it closer. I'm not after matching, you know, to the 10th of a percent, plus or minus five, I'm happy, so.
Can I ask a question in regards to, that portion of the Belfair Sewer, that was xed out, but it was moved up into the upper section?
You know, Bart Stack with Public Works worked on the portion for the Belfair Sewer, and I think in the old one, it was all clumped together, and he separated out between the debt and then expansion, something else.
Page 21, 22.
Okay.
23.
But again, we should just state that, or, I mean, the problem you have is you have a document you're trying to approve, and then you, and trying to educate the public.
No reference to where it went.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that.
And she were just, Kel just reminded me of one thing indirectly here. There's no way like Public Works number for the roads matches correctly in here, even, you know, I know Loretta saw some of it, but I know from our one-year and six-year tip, those numbers don't look close, you know, so, and I know, and I don't know about parks, but we somehow got to get in sync, these different entities, you know, I call them sub-departments of the county, to sync up where we have these other plans that support, you know, the- that support, you know, the, the major capital facilities fund of the county. So however you want to do that, you know, but it can be done. It's not, it's not a mind blower, it just needs to be done. And I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item 10.3? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period and move to commissioner deliberation or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Board of County Commissioners have reviewed and discussed the proposed amendments. I move that we approve and bring it forward as adopted.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended county capital facilities plan as presented here today. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, we got to work on how we, how we present our action.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Moving on to item number 11, board reports and calendar. Commissioner Trask, if you could get us started, and Commissioner Maryland and I'll finish up.
All right, so tomorrow is the LTAC meeting in the morning, and then I'm meeting with staff in the afternoon. And then I'll head to the Capitol after that meeting. On Thursday, I'll be in Olympia talking to the legislature. Saturday's the Polar Bear Plan, while I'll watch Ted jump in the water.
That's a good call.
That night is the Thurston County Lincoln Day Dinner. And then that takes us to Monday for the briefing and then a jail meeting.
Pressure?
All right, briefings. We had our fifth Tuesday meeting since we all came together. ACA, I met with ACA Government Affairs Person, the Executive Director of ARC. We all met together with the Skokomish Tribe and the Army Corps of Engineers, which was a very good meeting. I attended a meeting at Church in Belfair with Ryan Spurling, who puts on one of the best presentations for Active Shooter and how to handle it as an organization and what to do. It is not just information, it's actually very entertaining by the time it's done. I think they laughed as much as they thought and it was, it was very well done. I appreciate that they spread that training around to all these people. I also went and watched the Chair of the Thurston County Democrats do his first meeting. I've known him for a long time. He's a good man, so I went there for moral support. Cemetery Board Meeting brings back to our briefings. We had a meeting with all the electants all together and had a left board meeting this morning. I have a pre-application meeting that I'm going to be attending tomorrow in hopes of bringing businesses up forward here into North Mason again. I went and attended the Town Hall Meeting of Representative Kilmer. I'll be meeting with the Chair of the Republican Party from Mason County here shortly. Wyre 15 meeting, ACA meeting, Kansas Kickers having a Bunko Party briefings, and that's about all I can read.
Very good, thank you. As Commissioner Maryland mentioned, we had a really good meeting last week with the Skokomish Tribe, Army Corps of Engineers and Mason County Public Works to continue discussions around projects out in the Skokomish Valley. As I've said in the past, we've received over $15 million in federal funding and we're looking for some state support to help do the local match on that and get these critical salmon habitat and flood prevention projects underway. Their timeline is pretty aggressive from the Army Corps of Engineers. Will be, hopefully, if we get the funding secured, be moving forward with a project next year, which is really exciting. I think that'll be welcome news for residents in the Skokomish Valley. Also had a chance to go to the Mason County Republican Women's Lunch last Friday where I was one of the speakers. I talked about a potential jail project here in the county, but it was nice. Commissioner, former Commissioner Terry Drexler was also a speaker. And it was nice to actually sit down and have lunch with Terry and chat about county business, you know, in a, in a less formal setting and catch up with her on things that she's been doing after, after leaving office late last year. She also spoke to the group about unfunded mandates, which is a great tie-in when you're talking about criminal justice issues and some of the financial burdens that the state places on counties. Looking ahead for the week, tomorrow I have a meeting with Steve Gilmore from Republican, Republic Services. Also have a State Building Code Council meeting. And then I'll be attending the Capital Land Trust breakfast before coming into our briefings and regular meeting next week. Nothing else to add there. Move on to item 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The motion to adjourn.
I see.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn with no objection. We stand adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.